I call to the board the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Regular Public Meeting, uh, Monday, November twentieth. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was an act to ensure that a right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings with public bodies in which any business affected their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused members of this meeting setting for at the time given location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger. A post on the board's website that needs forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns from the evening. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Kalden?
Here.
Dr. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gallin?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola? Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Russ Levich?
Here.
Ms. Barnamet?
Here.
Ms. Vorgi?
Okay, we are going to, we need to reset recess to executive session. Uh, it is all pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJ SA ten colon four dash twelve and thirteen. The Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss the matter related to HIP and logical consequences. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJ SA's ten colon four dash thirteen. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the conference shall be over. So I move that we resolve, we recess to executive session for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So there will be speed regular session for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, we just, we try.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation under God, in the book of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go through our table of items before we get to enjoy our spotlight, uh, student spotlight. Uh, we had three communications this month to the board, which was one was related to assessment data and our faculty with board information to that. Uh, there was a question about our start time survey and, um, asked a question about the incident that occurred at our school campus, uh, Monday this week. Um, next thing on the agenda is, excuse me, the approval of our minutes. So I move that we approve the minutes of the Hybrid Regular Public Meeting Executive Session from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
We'll hold that.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalden?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. McGowan?
Uh, yes, Ms. McGowan.
That's why I said that, Gina Cola. Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Russ Levich?
Yes.
Ms. Barnamet?
Yes.
Ms. Vorgi?
Yes.
Okay, and then we get to move on to my favorite part of the chat, the meeting of the board.
Uh, to start, oh, I'm Irving. Uh, I heard that Irving's PTO held a Thanksgiving food drive to benefit the students in school because Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, and I'm sure there's still a lot for this Wednesday. Their PTO also had this holiday, this having a holiday bizarre, I believe, in November twenty-seven, but the Shamaan Evening on Thursday, November thirty. That same, that same day, they will have a Irving podium, complete with lineups, crafts, and user-to-user here. Oh, that's Bardot, they're going to also hold a Thanksgiving food drive to provide things, uh, through this, this upcoming Thanksgiving. Bardot's convention meetings are on November thirty, and lastly, the Highland Park Drama Club, uh, the high school drama club will perform a teaser of the upcoming play Buzz on November on November twenty-ninth, uh, and the students will also have a Q and A with the cast.
Uh, yeah, for some things. Over at middle school, the boys' basketball tryouts will hold today, sixth graders, and will also be held tomorrow, November twenty-first, for seventh, eighth graders in middle school gym, uh, three times after school. The boys' basketball team is also pulling in a Carol fundraiser until September first. Orders will, yeah, orders will ship out pre-divided meat after those dates, and they'll be first to get them home this. All girls can promote first and new packs of the basketball team. Also, Mr. Farmer is running winter track to the Highland Park Education Market for grades three through seven. Apply and subscribe with all of the information sign up in the Owl App line to parents not struggling. The middle school wants to answer my leader ones there, happy on Wednesday, twenty twenty-three. They are on Thursday and Friday, and students can go to school on Monday, November twenty-fourth. Uh, in the high school, alright. The Highland Park Basketball Drama Club will present pubs on September second and third, tickets are on sale now, purchase at HP Drama dot net. Next, the class of twenty twenty-five is holding a holiday pop-up shop on September seventeenth, from twelve to four in a high school gym. Come out and shop for local craft vendors, you guys love the holiday shopping stuff. Additionally, there are a lot of students who work very diligently, and they're well ready for the FTC NJ tournament on March thirty, twenty twenty-four, at King University. And they're very excited with what they've made last year. The C P community supported sponsors and mentors. They got a community member relationship, they're co-engineering design help. Please contact Ms. Stefan at K Stefan with PH. Steven, it's probably Steven with a PH at HP School's health. Have a good day. The first student of our period by which was held last Friday, a deserving student to celebrate my rec- congratulations to the hall. And there we are, we are starting a new section called Class Spotlight, where we spotlight one class of students. And our first candidate is a high school nutrition class. In this class, students will have opportunities to harvest vegetables from their own school garden and make fun recipes like fried green tomatoes and green tomatoes. They will prepare and share their own bread, breakfast, and dessert with their classmates in school kitchen. They've visited the farmer's market twice so far this year, will be all with the fresh vegetables. They also learn how to create nutritionally balanced meals using the mind of a inside. Second half of the course will work some wellness, the teacher and Ms. Stefan, who will be over teaching students about the importance of making and using proteins in their bodies, sharing their own created culture meals with each other, discussing the impact of food on their own wellness and heart rate. Students will be designing their own food truck businesses. And that's all for the afternoon of the schools.
Thank you very much. So you think any questions for our other candidates?
I just want to say thank you, that's awesome. And would it be possible to share the recipes? I think that would be maybe.
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, I'm in that class, and I could say that that class was really fun. Uh, we do a lot of talking. Mr. Cooper? Ms. Stefan?
Ms. Stefan.
I've never heard of Korean Korean to me that before, so, yeah, no agreement.
Well, thank you. We are going to go on to our super fans report, so I have to close it. Thank you, good evening, everyone, and thank you for a robust report, and I encourage everybody, if you can see in my email last week, to go ahead and buy tickets for the pub. Um, I think I can say out loud, it's Captain Brady, but it's a parody of a cir- wizarding world. And he ain't very popular, a parody of it, though, for all those Harry Potter fans of the wizardry models, go ahead and check it out, and you'll be agree. There we go, we got the teacher going, so go check it out. Uh, tonight is a very exciting night, we have, um, two, um, really exciting things that we want to spotlight, and then, um, a motion for our two second course. So first, I'd like to bring up Ms. Nap, who will be spotlighting a couple of B C model students.
Really short, so I'm gonna bring it down here. Um, so I am so thrilled to be here tonight, this has always been exciting, I need to come here and spotlight our Bardot students. Um, so tonight, we're here to honor three Bardot Dolphins who really truly embody our school's expectations of kindness, responsibility, and respect. They are all really extremely deserving of this award, award. Tonight, we're gonna honor Rowan, Rowan Alain, and Vika Gaybar, and Myron Med. I have a special guest here, so tonight, I invited some of our teachers here who nominated these students, so they can share their special works directly with them. So first up, I'm gonna have Ms. Dracken come up, and she's gonna honor Rowan. Alright, we're good, tight. Alright, so it has been absolute pleasure getting to know Rowan. Um, I have her back in second grade, and the band's back together, and we're reunited for fifth grade, so it's been really, really special. So she is a student who always follows directions, plans to help in hand, and cares about others. Rowan goes lovingly out to seek out opportunities to assist others. For example, she's often found during recess helping younger students. She embodies what it means to be a verbal dolphin, ready, kind, responsible, and respectful. Rowan is involved in several actual school activities such as student council and chorus, and we are so lucky to have her in our verbal community because she is such a positive role model.
I'm not rowing.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next up, I'm gonna invite Ms. Maiden, and she is the honor.
Mayana Met deserves a spotlight student recognition for exceptional dedication to the Bardot beliefs, actively taking risks and participating by using her whole life as examples, and truly believing that Bardot is an amazing school within our community. I've been working with her for two years now, and seen her commitment to making a positive impact. Mayana's leadership skills are evident, and her willingness to lead group projects, and her ability to inspire her peers. Furthermore, her kindness and respect for others in simplifying the qualities of a model student may be her perfect candidate for this honor. Congratulations.
Got a picture right here, don't tell me.
Our last student that was spotlighted couldn't be here, and now I've got her teacher, Ms. Salerno, but I'm gonna rebook the Salerno group with that and Vika. And Vika is a hardworking student who always wants to do her best and challenge herself. She is an active participant in our classroom and loves to help others. She not only works hard in school, but she also wants to excel in areas outside of school, often joining activities, and is part of Bardot's robotics club as well as book parties. She as well is deserving of this honor, congratulations to Vika. I am so proud of all of you. Keep it up. Congratulations again, I would love a round of applause for our new president. And hope that everyone's sticking around for the second part of my presentation, I'd like to call Ms. Maiden. Uh, to the podium, uh, we are excited to accept our sustainable jersey for schools' class.
So Randy, I have quite, you know, the speech, I want to pour it.
Good evening, my name is Tracy Maiden, and I am the Green Team's district coordinator. Tonight, we are champions of sustainability. I stand before you not just as an admirer, but as a cheerleader to celebrate the district's recent ascent to another three years of R I S certification status from Sustainable Jersey Certified Schools. So if you're not familiar with the C P S, we call it, they are a nonprofit organization dedicated to assisting schools in environmental, economic, and social growth. The certification program is supported by training, technical assistance, and grant opportunities. We have been S J S members since two thousand and fourteen, and have been honored to receive various grants that you may recognize while observing the schools and speaking with students. This recognition underscores the district's commitment to sustainability and its dedication to providing students with the tools they need to contribute to a more flexible and environmentally conscious future. I would like to highlight several key initiatives and accomplishments that have contributed to the district's well-deserved recognition. Professional development for sustainability. Our professional development plan is the secret sauce to ensuring our educate educators stay on top of their green game. The district's professional development plan further reinforces the commitment to continuous improvement, ensuring that educators stay informed and empowered to integrate these principles into their teaching practices. Great enhancement of district strategic plans. Weaving sustainability into the district strategic plans reflects a forward-thinking approach to education. This guarantees that environmental considerations are woven into the fabric of decision-making processes, promoting a holistic and responsible approach to education. It's like adding a dash to kale to some, you didn't know you needed it, but now you can't write your product without it. So it's a system of equal twist, and now I call that strategic. District commitment to digital learning and equitable access. Our commitment to digital learning coupled with a focus on equitable access guarantees that all students have the opportunity to engage with technology. We're open to administrators for a foster inclusive and technology-livered community. Data safety and security policy. We're the modern-day guardians, shining our earth equipped with encryption tools, access control shields, and the mighty two-factor authentication apps. Following this policy isn't just a legal duty, it's our mission to uphold trust, prevent disruption, and construct a safe, secure digital payment for everyone involved. We're the ones who clearly know entry to any data on re-truthers. Our safe return to school construction and utility and paternity and service plan establishes a safe and secure fire in the raw, determined to the extent of goal of creating a secure and responsible towards the finance. Repurchasing policy. A radical clause for choosing equal friendly supplies, it's like shopping for green essentials to save the planet. Who knew going regular is so shitty? Our repurchasing policy showcases the district's dedication to making environmentally conscious decisions, contributing to the overall reduction of this ecological footprint. Policies to promote physical activity and safe routes to school district policy. We encourage students to be equal warriors on white, reducing their carbon footprint one petal at a time. Our policies not only contribute to the health and well-being of students, but also provide a broader sustainability goals of positive relationship building while walking and reducing reliance on motorized transportation. And finally, community engagement. It's like throwing a party inviting the whole town to join in our excitement. The Highland Park Committee provides opportunities for students to have real world, world learning experiences. By collaborating with local experts, businesses, and organizations, our school staff has enriched the curriculum and exposed students to practical applications of what they are learning in the classroom. Because let's face it, the saving of planet is more fun to encourage ones at home. In conclusion, being a part of a sustainable jersey for schools is not just an accolade, it signifies the Highland Park Schools district's commitment to shape the responsible and relevant and environmentally aware citizens. By instilling these values in our students, we are preparing them to be leaders in a world that demands sustainable solutions to complex challenges. The Highland Park Schools district's achievements and sustainability are a source of pride for the entire community. The dedication to foster a sustainable and strong learning environment sets a standard for educational institutions nationwide. I applaud the board of education, administrators, educators, and students for their collective efforts in making Highland Park a lean and sustainability. Thank you for your time, attention, and commitment to the future of our community.
Well, I'd like to introduce Ray Solomon, who is a part of, um, Jersey's Sustainable Schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Hi, I'm Ray Solomon, I'm the Executive Director and founder of Sustainable Jersey, and also have a part of resident with about three kids in the schools. And so I'm very proud to be here to convey this certification. It's a, the Sustainable Jersey Certification, the standards are created by a series of task forces on different topical issues, where academics and experts and local practitioners and nonprofit organizations come together and deliberate what it is that schools could be and should be doing to address our most pressing issues. They come together and they devise the standards, and those standards are very detailed, it's not like, hey, do something about repurchasing us, pass this policy, um, implement these standards. Um, and everything that Highland Park have credit for, as, uh, Ms. Maiden knows, is rigorous review, it doesn't meet the standards, it gets rejected, there's three rounds of coaching, it's a very rigorous process that, uh, you know, she, uh, probably got a couple of gray hairs in the head somewhere going through. So I just want to commend you for, for following the program, so I'm sure you got lots of help. It touches so many aspects of a school that it really requires a whole district-like effort. And I also want to say, um, as proud as I am that, that we got bronze, there's a lot more that we got. Um, bronze is the lowest level certification, silver is in sight, uh, more than the next cycle. And it's, the schools are, um, I think often overlooked when it comes to the impact on sustainability, and, and I think, you know, we know the impact of educating our kids, um, so it's almost trite to say, uh, how important that is. But when I look at things like, for example, food waste in cafeteria, it's one of, a really hot topic around the state, something a lot of schools are advancing on. Um, schools, and just as an example, um, are probably the biggest single purveyor of meals, right? We feed, every day, a huge chunk of our population, and food itself accounts for about forty percent of our greenhouse gas emissions, right? And then, as a society, we waste about forty percent of our food. So it's a huge amount of our, you know, when we think about all the climate impacts that we're feeling, we think about flooding and forest fires and future food insecurity, and just the anxiety of climate change, food is just a big deal. So schools have an outsized role to play, this, again, is just one example, multiplied by everything we do. Um, schools feed a huge percentage of our population every day, account for a huge chunk of that. And schools are the places where people go to learn social norms about everything, including food. So for most kids in the state, schools are where they go to learn that food's not that important. It's okay to waste it, uh, doesn't have to be high quality, um, you know, or it can be a place where people learn to cherish food, not waste it, make sure it goes to people who need it, um, compost, you know, uh, just one example. So, um, that's why I have to be so strongly that the work that you're doing, because it's hard work, and I know that you're not sitting around for your time and money all the time waiting for us to think up things for you to do. But, so that's why when you do the things, uh, it really means a lot to us, and we're very grateful for the work that you do, but honestly, no, it's not, so we're. So thank you very much, congratulations. I'll give it to you later when you're, uh, on a desk and you won't like get them, or get.
So you just add them to our.
Yeah, you just add them to the next spot then. Yes, and do I get any tea? Okay. And do you want to see the choices?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much, congratulations.
So I wanna echo the sentiments, um, from Sir Solomon, and thank Tracy Maiden and the Green Team, really crazy, but the Green Team collectively for all their hard work. It's an understatement the amount of work that's involved, and a lot of emails back and forth, this policy, that policy, this, and that. And we really don't, don't go into it deep, and I really, you know, I better appreciate her work. Um, I know we're close to silver, we are, that's why when I came out, we are like really close, very, very. Very good, that is the work that Tracy, the team, uh, does, so we're really excited, we'll promote them out on our social media and on the website. Uh, and again, another big round of applause for Tracy, the Green Team, and thank you very much. So I just have one last thing for our super content report, uh, and I'm requesting, uh, a resolution to submit our Q stack. Uh, district report before, for those who were listening last week, our last board meeting, our D P R, our annual quality assurance report, so we do quality control from the district department of education, so they're doing a self-assessment that we do every year. This year, we're being monitored, so we do the self-assessment, that's what we're proving tonight, and then, um, they come in, uh, later in the winter, uh, after the new year to actually look through our documents and confirm that it's all, um, legit. But before we do that, I just want to thank everybody for coming that's, that's in public, but feel free to leave whenever, unless you want to stay for the rest of our wonderful board meeting, uh, but feel free to leave when, when you're ready, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stay.
Um, I rose to board education sector recommendations for sending, it was from the submission of the Q stack, district department board to be there.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Russ Levich?
Yes.
Ms. Vorgi?
Yes.
Ms. Vorgi?
Yes.
Thank you, that concludes my report. Uh, we're gonna move on to committee reports. Uh, we, this is about the meeting, but we're posting committee reports, and the agenda items, only the ones that are due and highlighting, they're like fifty weeks ago. Then we'll have a comment, and then we'll vote it over, as per our usual. So great for the construction and announcement.
Hi, so according to instruction that November fourteenth, uh, we were joined by Ms. Nap, who presented the information on the advanced learning program due to subpar and or whatever questions. Um, one inquiry was how the program information was made available to parents and families. In addition to the letter being sent to Bardot family, in an email, this talk was presented, the information at back to school, may prepare to attend the special session. The second question was how the program is being implemented. Ms. Nap discussed the A O P program being implemented as described in the program description, and these states requirements that district identifying served gifted and talented students. Using multiple measures of assessment, which may include intelligence and aptitude tests, and provide opportunities to participate in advanced learning outside of the general education curriculum. All labels described in the program description have been among, although the words have been changed, so for example, if they, one of the particular, um, cycles involved observant nature, so they just switched the order and more for the kids to be able to go outside. Um, there was concern that the program is not inclusive to all students because there was the use of aptitude assessments. Dr. Coats again, Ms. Nap provided some background that this was a shared concern at the time of the program's creation, and that the district had effort to be inclusive, inclusive, so meeting the state requirements, designed and expected to include S E M, which is our school-wide enrichment model for all grades. So the school-wide enrichment model allows for extra enrichment cycles beyond students' regular special classes. Um, and an example of that is FUSE, which is a STEM program provided to fifth graders. Uh, the program description, which is listed in the committee report, um, lists the multiple measures used when assessing students for advanced learning program. Parents must give consent for their children to take the G P U assessment. Um, in the past, they did try giving it to all students, but students felt a lot of texting fatigue about taking it, and it was quickly discontinued. So it was noted that a student shows a strong interest in our talent in area. A teacher will often advocate for that student to join a particular A O P cycle regardless of their performance on the end of assessment. The committee requested that racial demographics of students in A O P be, uh, shared with Equitable Excellence. The committee also discussed two course proposals, zoology and animal behavior and A P environmental science. Uh, we did ask for more information about the type of labs students might experience in zoology, and the stack of follow-up possibilities including virtual dissections, observations, classifications of. classifications of, um, to organ teams. The curriculum will be written over the summer, and the committee recommends that both courses be forwarded in the approval process. We also discussed the difference between regular or CP honors and honors distinction courses. Some courses have honors options, and some have honors distinction options, and some have no opportunities for advanced learning. So we kind of need to clarify, well, why is that, how did that come to be? Unlike honors class is, the honors distinction is a choice students in a heterogeneously grouped class, meaning all levels. They can make that choice to go deeper into the content at the standard during the third marking period. The distinction was created to kind of expand opportunities for advanced learning in courses that did not have honors sections. It encourages students to dive deeper into content without committing to a full honors class, which may also promote participation in honors and AP classes in the future. The distinction was negotiated as a side part of the HPDA for teachers who wanted to commit to offering this option in their classes. The creation of this kind of distinction relies on staff buy-in, interest, skill, and commitment. Next, we discussed the NJSLA district performance level summary report. We were provided test performance summary report that included demographics. The committee shared concerns about the numbers of students meeting expectations in the ELA and MACT, and how while the performance of grades may improve as a whole, the disparities in performance for our students of color, our students who receive free reduced lunch, students with IEPs, and students that are ENL or English as a New Language remain quite large. The committee asked for routine updates and student support interventions during our meetings. This meeting, we were provided with an update on meeting instruction in K through three. Teachers at Bourbon and Barlow have received training in foundations, reading program, and integrity, which is a writing program. Ms. Rodriguez is working with teachers to strengthen the rest of the ELA block time using curriculum that the district already has, and is using the Canadian's norm assessments and progress monitoring tools, which are aligned to the New Jersey standards and provide teachers with useful norm assessment data. The committee was also briefed on the intervention efforts at middle school. Intervention is that the middle school uses REE180 and MACT180, which are two intervention programs. They are having some resistance to intervention periods because students do have to miss oral language in order to attend. Stanford is working to identify and means encouraging students to take the assessment seriously so that they get more accurate and useful data possible. There was also some discussion that parents don't really believe that the scores that students get in these assessments are accurate because their kids just kind of aren't interested in taking them. So they're really trying to brainstorm how to kind of motivate students to try to do well. The committee encourages Rodriguez to suggest that any larger changes need to be made in order to address these gaps, such as new curricula or intervention programs, or even a change in the actual intervention class to be required period. All right, now we'll go to, oh, we also discussed a need of perceived request for the middle school for gay awareness training. The committee asked for more information regarding the need for that. The new items on the curriculum instruction agenda include the AP Environmental Science course, here are reports HS232401A and B, BS232401A, oh, I'm sorry, and BS232402A through G. We also have the approval of INTER for classroom health and wellness. And the submission of our school self-assessment for determining grades under the Kentucky bullying and Bill of Rights Act. That I correctly put. Oh, it's a decision. Okay. All right, any questions?
Yeah, okay. You said, you guys touched on some kind of rights from the middle school. I didn't hear what you said. You said that in the meeting, you touched on some kind of like rights from the middle school, but I didn't hear.
Right, yeah, right.
No, was it towards the end of the report?
Yes.
Oh, there was that request for gay awareness training, so the committee asked for more information.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So we've got questions for curriculum instruction. We're gonna move on to equality excellence, honey.
Yes. Equity excellence met on January sixteenth, and we had a nice exciting update on our advisory pilot programs regarding at the middle school and high school. Dr. Kowdziek shared that these responsive advisory meetings are being facilitated by faculty members, teachers and counselors, and they provide targeted, specific, social and emotional lessons, eighteen times across the school, across the school here at both the middle and high school. These are thirty-minute meetings, and they have been appropriated to be in the school schedule of all schools. Teachers who are participating in this advisory program, we use the scope and sequence of lessons in the responsive advisory guidebook prior to this one year, and it shows lessons for their grade levels, make the adjustments as needed based on the needs of the school that they identified and the stage levels. Teachers do follow a certain curriculum and work closely in collaboration with the committee to ensure that teachers might have to, you know, require additional time outside of their contractual service to implement this curriculum. But they are also in the mindful of the specific needs and tailor it and tailor the lessons to their needs of our students. So Dr. Kowdziek presented the outline of the middle school and high school advisory groups on a storyboard of highlights that would share that the middle school advisory meetings are being offered to all three grades. The six-grade lessons are geared towards setting goals, communicating kindness and self-control. Seven-grade lessons are focused on conflict resolution and on building an academic mindset. Eight-grade lessons are focused on academic rigor and building future leaders. Again, all of these, all areas were developed through, in conversation with faculty around concerns of students seen as being present in the way. There are thirty-five staff members running an advisory class. Each class has ten to eleven students. Teachers work together during the year to handpick each group. And the new assignments are intended to follow the students through their course at the middle school. The format includes a welcome message, announcements, acknowledgements, and the activity, which is a core part of the SEL learning piece, and reflection period. And I think this week will be the third meeting of the year. Teachers are really excited about this, a new part of their school day. Community is interacting with that looking forward to hearing Monday on the application and future meetings. At the high school, ninth and tenth graders are being offered advisories. There are twelve freshman advisories and eleven sophomore advisories with ten to twelve students in each group. High school faculty are giving these meetings an opportunity to discuss important issues and helps students become more vested in, in doing their part to create a strong, vibrant, healthy school community. Meetings are designed to facilitate opportunities for students to be social about their challenges and sharing with their peers challenges and experiences, and also creating a safe and open environment for students. Similar formats, middle school, high school, they, the meetings consist of a reading, and they have shadow times where students can talk about their highs and lows and challenges and triumphs. There's a reflection period, which is a forum advisory. At high school, they approach specific questions or discussion topics to allow students to reflect on their own experience and listen to the experiences of their peers. There's discussion activity, which is a follow-up opportunity for students to connect and help each other in a group discussion. The faculty received four days of training for responsive classroom and collaborated with Mr. Laster to develop the program. And their topics include expressing gratitude, digital identity, tolerance versus acceptance, and collaboration. Juniors and seniors, if you're wondering what they're gonna be doing during the advisory time, juniors and seniors will be meeting with class advisors and school counselors in whole classroom groupings during the advisory times. These meetings will incorporate lessons, so there's on, or are incorporated lessons focused on navigating non-ions and cultural vibration, like for the themes of leadership and spirit of service. Couple of committee questions were as follows. How will administrators assess the impact of the program? And Dr. Kowdziek quoted that administrator administration is looking at reviewing discipline data, attendance data, and looking for correlation, possible correlations. So we are seeing ways to create more positive culture in school and cultures that will reduce the two students wanting to be engaged with the partners in the community. They are also using post-climate surveys, and they added that into the prior baseline culture surveys. We also talked about, our questions asked around whether students will be able to bring up issues or incidents that arise at the end of the time or the school year in advisory. The Dr. Kowdziek read advisory, and we've had more opportunities for some special reflection of issues kind of current events that are affecting the equals for the community. And, you know, the students will try to be clear about that kind of discussion. So if you're all excited about to hear about the advisories, we'll forward to hearing more as it unfolds before the fourth of the year. We also discussed, or reviewed, I should say, and discussed our RISE and RISE data and our OSS or obstacle suspension data. RISE is our therapeutic program now that is implemented in, as an alternative to obstacle suspension, where students are receiving part-day instruction as well as restorative support. The committee reviewed restorative action data, particularly data for September, October. The administration's reporting post data happens, most students may frequently turn up in the spring reports. Dr. Kowdziek reported that they will be sharing out more of this kind of valid data in upcoming meetings. We also talked about what we noticed in terms of the majority of the discipline incidents occurring in the middle school, and mostly generated at lunch, playground, after school, not necessarily through the early crucial time. Also, we looked at the fact that OSS, OSS suspensions, obstacle suspensions that occurred that occurred in the middle school all involved are Black, Hispanic, Latino, and interracial students. So again, just looking at those racial disparities. And we discussed the potential positive impact of the quality of the meals we sell on our district reports. Dr. Kowdziek indicated that some of the students selected for advisory or identified matching strong teachers to, you know, hopefully impact students in a positive way. We discussed also incorporating qualitative data into our reports to restore the work being done in the district reports, just so that you can have more kind of depth in terms of understanding the nature of some of these incidents. Then we moved on to talking about professional development that's been offered around restorative responsive work in the district since the spring of twenty twenty-three up to now. In the spring of twenty twenty-three, Todd Rooster provided a training on responsive classroom for special areas. Teachers who are in the 20th, art, and payday, payday teachers who go specials attended this sort of training and really focused on strategies that we need to be special classes, which are, you know, constantly changing in terms of the rotation of students that these teachers are seeing and receiving. There was a summer training led by the International Institute for Strategic Practices, attended by the middle school staff. Teacher leader trainings for each teacher, who also provided on relationship links. Those are those period here on teacher trainings. Also in the summer, there's a responsive classroom training on Torah course, dance course, and certified screen. We talked about, just requesting some follow-up implementation of the professional development training and Dr. Kowdziek gave the leaders to have release times and your observations and coaching with the staff implementing advisory groups. And administrators also do informal and informal observations. And she would be sharing up data with our committee and then around as implementation cycle to, you know, provide some of the data on how the programs need to be implemented and evaluated on measures that have been reflected, or data, I should say, reflected. We also looking forward to having administration join some future to discuss.
What more to you, Dr. Kowdziek?
Okay, thank you. Also looking forward to having administrators join us at a future meeting to, for Q and A and discussion of the implementation of our advisories. And with that, that wraps up that discussion. We also looked at, well, Dr. Kowdziek brought a nice overview of the September policy hours, which, you know, Alex also mentioned in the curriculum video overview. The two policies that are first read that we looked at, five one one six, education for children review. And these are updates that are required as per state mandate. And we looked at, most of these updates being more than language consolidation, so nothing too substantive in terms of red flags, or issues that we felt there were concern, a little concerned. We also looked at policy five one one, eligibility of resident, non-resident students, and get similar findings there. So nothing to report. These are the things, and that's it.
Thank you so much, a very detailed report. Our reports are getting better and better, boy. It's competition here between the rounds. I want to thank our teachers for participating in advisory. They don't, you know, they don't have to, because it's like fucking the odd that it's really, potentially really important for students. So I do appreciate that the teacher, you know, being fully, who's asking, you know.
Yeah, sorry, and I can attest how great advisory is. We had ours on Friday, where we wrote thank you letters to the veterans. And let me just say, it's so nice to kind of just, you know, be like a free people project. But it was also nice to be able to give them to the community, and it was really cool thing that this worked with them.
We did have to rush, but it was. What was that, are you, what is it? We, we did have to rush because it was only half an hour, but it was worth it. Okay.
Yeah, especially when that half an hour was fast.
And I do understand, but I don't know, like, as an undergrad, I don't know if I'd be able to talk for that long or listen for that long, but in terms of our activity, it was, for sure. I can also attest to the, to the Heidi Rooster workshop. She did a circle with some of the students, some students who were selected, and that was one of them, about like issues in school and stuff like that. I know she was really good for it, and I told, I guess she registered, it was in charge of organizing, that it would be really cool to have something like that again.
It's always a good student perspective. It is.
There's a lot of stuff that I think the board is unaware of, that being one of them. And it was really, really nice to be able to input my feedback, so.
Thank you. Any question, any questions back to the other students or comments? Okay, thank you so much. Minus facilities, for a place not as long as the last two, but there were a lot, this long, this long. We had a long meeting as well. We met on the fourteenth, Dr. Kowdziek, Ms. Rosa, Todd Flanagan, myself, Janet Royce, and Anne. And, and V, I keep saying my name. And we covered many areas. We got a update from Colin, back when it was last made. On our daycare after-school program, we are currently have two hundred and thirty-five students. So he's very happy with being a moment. And pretty, and standing down, he feels pretty comfortable. He basically looked for a longer standing person to help him, but we are, things are going along well. He commented that the med scientist program came in, there were new stays that we don't receive, he's going to keep that other things like that. He's looking to start some mini camps in January, once students can be outside playing, it's off here. So he's got an idea of bringing in one hour, you know, extra crafts, sports, that kind of thing. We'd be no extra charge for our end care families, so I thought that was really great. And he's still exploring certification options. New regs are coming out in January, so it's really worth doing anyway now that we then have to be re-done in January. It looks like we would need, you know, one thing, or be certified, and we, and the current regs is that we might need an additional part-time supervisor. Somebody, that's based on a reg, something that would be between Colin and site managers. So he's trying to pull up on that as soon as he can, and we'll see what happens with these rates in January. So it's going well there in his perspective. John Flanagan, Ms. Rosa commented that progress is, we'll launch a classroom, we'll still make progress. But now we're.
But now they appear to be set up. We have plumbing and electricity. The movement should be after Thanksgiving. It's going to be very well processed. And we thank everybody who keeps working on it. It's happening. I think the furniture was in there. I would be opposed to being done and decide I'll move it after Thanksgiving. So we adjusted to the document Poggi that we definitely need to go take a field trip out there, see the, because they're widely done. Go along, Paul. As far as our preschool expansion, finance is the next item on our agenda. And combined that with the meeting that we went to with the mayor and it was before our finance meeting. It was a whole group of people. It was the architect, net architect, Will Lebo two, Art Hall lawyer, the borough's lawyer, Matt Hale, Terry. It was a round table of all of us. The bottom line that we learned was that Lebo two rounded is not yet in a redevelopment tract. We weren't given the impression that it was. And the owner of the property needs it to be in order for it to be, I guess, financially feasible and engaging in this P three. In order for that property to be the redevelopment tract, it's a whole process, which will take over six months' time to get there. The whole council, you know, do some study and, you know, all those other things that happen to develop. So it's not looking like a reasonable option for us at this point. There was the other issue that it appears that the borough would continue to, in a sense, own that property. But we can't as a school system engage in a 30-year lease. It would be a borough doing it. At the end, you're right, we need to turn it over to us. But there's, what's an easy mistake I've been finding out is that there's just, there's a lot, there's a lot of information. I don't know how to put it. Every time, I sat there, at least today, maybe a refresher. I'm probably struggling with this. There's just so many pieces. And there was the issue we had in finance facility. We talked about state grants. One just came out. The grant was given, money was given to certain districts to work on facilities. But the, and what we learned is that Linda did look into that grant when it was, when we could apply. But we needed to have, we need to have enough money to put in our fair share, whether that fair share would be of our project. It would be substantial. There's some kind of money that we have hanging around. So that grant we couldn't do. There's potentially another state grant for facilities coming up. Not formally announced yet. In order to do that, if I'm saying this right, am I right that we would, that's where we need our long-range plan updated? Right, yes? No, that's wrong one, sorry. Okay, the other part of this is that we still need our local fair share for the next grant. So that would depend on how large a project we're into with that whole, what would be our share of the grant. Okay. The other thing that we've learned is that in order to get that service aid, which is some districts appear to need that to help these facilities projects, we need to have unhoused students as term of use. In order for us to show unhoused students, we need to have a long-range facility plan updated because we didn't have preschool without long-range plan. So that would be another step we would need to take in order to then potentially be eligible for that service aid to stay. So one possibility to, and pre-K can't be unhoused. But the other, unhoused students can't be preschoolers because that's not handed forward. I mean, it's funny. So one thought that is floating out here is that if we moved, changed our idea, when we pre-K to Irving and move first graders to Bartle, the first grader would be then unhoused in that theoretical model, which might make us eligible for this debt service. In order to determine if that's a possibility, we need to get the architect back to look at Irving to see, because it can't be new building. It can't be an add-on, right? It has to be renovation of buildings. So can Irving be renovated to accommodate more of preschool? And then we'd have to social run random to get our first graders to Bartle. Anyway, the bottom line to all this is that there is a lot of these parts, these two things. And so we definitely need to slow down. Funds facilities definitely felt that we need to slow down our decision-making process, sort all this stuff out so that ultimately we make the best decision for the school and the community and finance system. So that's where, that's where, that's where we are on preschool. If we're back to gathering information, figuring out what works next. What works best next. Other topics I've uncovered, the need for a health insurance broker. Denise discovered we can actually have a health insurance broker for the district. And we need someone to submit proposals on behalf to see if we can do better on our insurance premiums. So we keep it out of our P. And we've got six candidates, two of them, two finalists who were interviewed. Also, just last week, Keith and myself were there as well as who came from advocates. And Denise Christine, we all interviewed. And a recommendation will come to the board out of December leaving to select one of these service providers for insurance, who can get us quotes and hopefully see whether we can get a better price on our health insurance premiums, which are obviously a big part of our budget. And there's potentially possibilities, state aid coming for future for health, healthcare, and we're going to keep an eye on that. It's actually coming. Other topics, baseball field donation. The athletic boosters got $406,000 to run base of baseball fields. And there's been negotiations and communication to get that project ready to undertake. Name vendors and turf and all that. It's a my report, that's for you. So it's moving along. There might be some, some of this might be available. Who might come to us or in the center voting in terms of vendors and so forth. Other topics, budget calendar. We are starting the budget for 2023, 24. So you have the calendar in the minutes on this agenda. And that will really commence. It has already commenced in terms of within the district for administrators. And in January, we'll be looking at staffing impact and question of power, power ratios, ratio of staff, certificate staff to professionals, you know, which is impacting the budget. And then that process will move forward. Preliminary budget will be presented in the beginning of April. Right, that's the first time it comes to the board. Okay, we had a conversation about grants and funding opportunities that we, excuse me. We did apply for the high-impact tutorship grant. We've got some questions about that. And it was explained that when we receive grant money, as in the ESSR money that you received, it really is important that we use it all. And we have the grants and quite a bit of money over the last couple of years that we are busy accounting for and spending. And so at that point, there wasn't enough money in our current grant money to put in tutoring. And that's what we've gone around and allowed for additional grant money. But we certainly wanted to keep our eye out as it's a split and want to determine money, spending the money that we have and going forward for grants that become available. Denise reported on broad grants that are moving along. Those are grants that we can apply for, two out of three for branding, and those are moving along in facilities in the district. Last piece was policy. Two policies are being abolished related to school nutrition and food services because there is a new policy that is here for tertiary. I'm sure you've read the law, it's like 15 pages long. So there's a big test. But pretty much just really laying out how our food services have to run. Hopefully that's how it is running. And just on the notes I actually made to the end of the meeting, I think Jen for being so thorough or heard folks. We actually have this informationally, 638 students that qualified for free reduced lunch, which is actually 300% of our population, which is a pretty substantial number. And six additional, because that's as the qualifications change. So we are, give a high number of students who are benefiting from our lunch program. So that is the finance facilities report. And on the agenda, two things for the new. The bill list for November 1st to November 15th. We now have $997,214. Approval of the cafeteria bill list, athletic bill list. There are a number of new professional services that we are voting on, mostly for specialization evaluations, educational evaluations, occupational therapy. Opening us the possibility of using a different healthcare staffing for nurses and other professionals who might be near special education. Through the municipal lines, with a couple of professional development and one meeting for parents that are related to drug prevention. The hidden plain site is one for parents that has been paid for by the municipal lines and by the Center for Family Services. We have a translator for Arabic on our agenda to add that service. Under bedside instruction, we have an additional student who needs to attend Rutgers behavioral health for bedside instruction. And then we have a few changes to the grant. For our O A change, to our I D A basic grant amount, there's a change here. You can look at the numbers. There's a resolution to the SEC, the preliminary report of the treasurer for school monies as of September 30th. And other board secretary reports that we are asked to include. That's 15, 16, also certifications for our local secretary. There's a budget transfer, so we're 17. We are voting on the submission of pre-kindergarten projected enrollment for 24, 25. And I actually asked for those numbers, it's not here. And so we are projecting 90 students in our pre-kindergarten, 24, 25, as 3-year-olds and 30- to 40-year-olds and 20-year-olds students. And the last blue item is acceptance renewal of our, the company that does our bedside and passenger service. And we'll, I'll leave it. Any questions?
Can I, I have one question.
Sure.
I think the issue before, putting preschool classrooms in there, whether that looks like that's where footage should also put preschool, you know, third floor of the tower. And so exploring that, like, essentially would be breaking down halls, right?
And looking to use, and I don't forget all the classrooms, but looking to use interior space. Do you have more information?
Yeah, so it would definitely be enough, a lot of significant renovations would also would contribute additional costs because we have to have temporary housing somewhere. So like four classrooms, we could not have modular classrooms, like four first grade classes, but we still have two more plus specialized classes that we have to find some temporary housing for during that significant construction if it was possible.
It's really an idea to explore, you know, going back to that idea. Because we can't build up, we can't build out. We don't use, I don't know, we can't apply the word, but teamwork is explored in this now perspective. Anything else? Move out personnel, Anne, you're up.
All right. Excuse me. I'm hearing all this, I've got this on the audio, so I'll try to speak louder. It can be kind of like a, I'm available to come and try to do some, um, mock up or try to, you know, have a board member be not present and some of us try to talk. I wonder if some of the microphones are worse than others. I'm hearing some, yeah. So if we need to try by saying that also, you know. Yeah, new mics, maybe. I hear your experience worked very well, Christina's one needs not so well. I think, I think maybe even when you're speaking into it.
What?
Do the duck and cushions, Mike.
Oh. When you just said, and this won't work better.
Oh, yeah, I don't know how it sounds good to me, but.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little.
So do it here, yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
And we are hoping it is possible to include your Torian sometime in the future to try to use their sound system.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Something that's been explored.
All right, well, you're good. So I, we had our last meeting under the reverse and I reported out on that the last board meeting. Sorry, that was our last personnel meeting, because I'm November 1st and I reported on that. Our next meeting was to be November 27th. But actually, we posted, that might have until early December, maybe. That's a translation notice. November 27th meeting? Oh, person personnel, I'm sorry.
Oh, because we're going to do it on the 29th. Oh, wait. Why did it go on, why did it go on this? I don't know, we'll follow up this.
Okay, awesome. So we're getting a couple of things. Let me move on to the bold text, which indicates in here, this does get public. Number three, we have two home hires. Welcome to Ms. Diaz and Ms. Doran's sadness. Number seven, we have two volunteers who will be advising a high school jurisdiction will bring in. Thank you to those volunteers, that's great to hear. I heard about that from a child. And I was, it's time, but. Number 14, approval of professional development. There are two additional staff members at the bar of the table. Oh, sorry, one additional staff member listed by Mrs. Claire Martin. We'll be doing several items. Let's see. Number 18, after-school program staff. I say it's approval of, approval of, is it approval of a job description? Or just the approval of the possibility of hiring a site assistant, is that right?
No, it's sort of, that's what the, that that work with students, that's what their fault sites is.
So what's it mean to say that they're not approved? Oh, actually, I didn't, I'm sorry, I was reading the table incorrectly. Gotcha. My bad. I think we just left out another title or this. Or maybe, perhaps Ms. Bo was taking on a new title. She sells her site assistants now. Sorry, we didn't talk about that. My apologies. And our lead to morale will also be working as a site assistant. If we, if we go, yes, on this proposal, which I just gave you. Number 20, approval of a chaperone change for role in command. Number 21, approval of a translator for Arabic. Number 22, childcare or family literacy night. Number 23, approval of a meeting for staff who attended family literacy meetings. 24, a sidebar regarding compensation of nurses on field trips. Number 25, requesting approval of Title I after-school paper tutoring staff. Did you remember what we just said about paper tutoring means?
Professional.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Virtual tutoring.
Virtual.
Virtual tutoring, sorry, yeah.
Why is it called paper?
That's a good question.
That's what our company has been.
The company is called paper tutoring. And it's pretty much. It's got a little pop-up in there. Probleme on any light tab with, like, classroom, with blocks. We've got a little key in the bottom bracket corner. And if you click on that, it'll open the paper's website and you request tutoring at any time. You can get one project, one math skill, three arts skills. I've not used it so much, but I think it's good things, so.
I'm waiting for procrastination.
For procrastination, all right.
But it is really.
That's great. I remember we were ready to do that. I think this was called paper. That's pretty brutal. Let's see. I got lost one second. I think, I think we are. Okay, number 25 was approval of staff for the paper tutoring program. Number 26, approval of Title III after-school yes, now enrichment program staff. But that's what it's meant to be doing that. Number 27, approval of Title I after-school enrichment program staff. This one's a, number 28, approval of staff for Title I adult tutoring program at Bartle. Number 29, approval of staff for Bartle's high-impact tutoring program. And there's a re-in on this item. Rather than high-impact tutoring running two times per week, it will be running three times per week. So I move into the Board of Education, except for our recommendation for superintendent to approve the following staff for Bartle's high-impact tutoring program at Bartle Olympic School, which runs three times a week, December 12th, 2023 through May 9th, 2024, et cetera.
Ms. Allen, it starts November 29th.
Oh, and there's another change. It just starts on November 3rd, rather than November 29th. Thank you so much. And number 30, approval of agents over time to take care of various repairs. And that's all I have. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question, sorry. So for the, the figure is very, I understand that it's like a whole round line. So what would the after-school program? So what would the after-school program be? Would it just be like an additional tutoring by course? Or is it like, how would the online tutoring, or what, what, what are the details?
I was wondering about that too, yeah.
I got a talk to first today, it's teacher that proctor. So students can come, they have tutoring on teachers, and they're there to proctor.
Thanks, that's a good question.
Yeah, I just thought it was an independent, but um, I was just trying to, thank you.
So I've got policies without meetings, however, on meetings without meetings is our last. However, there are three additional policies on, well, it's been looked at two weeks ago. It was for the non-resident students, they'll move to resident non-resident students. Education of homeless children, youths, and food services. Those are all preferred to eat. So I'm trying to really figure with those. And now we go to public comment. I think I have this memorized on you. The head of the Board of Education, welcome to public participation, and Patrick Gervis, not a corporate comment. Four policy, number four, number seven, staff is away from the garden, public participate in public meetings. This is our three minutes of anybody that wants to comment, we haven't already the room tonight at this point. So Abby, you're first here. Yes.
Hi, so thank you to, I sent an email about the audio, thank you.
Oh, wait, Abby, one second. Abby, hold on one second, the audio was only coming on my computer, not the speaker.
It's coming off.
Oh, it's only coming out of my computer, not the speakers. Yeah, yeah, we can hear it despite actually the way that we're moving.
I, I feel you're okay.
I mean, you guys, you, is it people, YouTube people here?
Yeah.
Okay, then please continue, Abby, sorry.
No, no problem, thank you. I was actually just saying, I sent an email during the meeting about the audio, and thank you for addressing it. I'll just reiterate that meeting after meeting, it has been an issue, I mean, you know, it's a matter of moving or doing something, eventually make it a hybrid meeting. It really hasn't been fully at this point for a while. Couple other comments I wanted to make. It was really good to hear the update about the after fair, and I want to say that Colin and Carla at Irving have been extremely helpful and responsive. And I should also mention Caitlin Follit have been great. I do think that while staffing is comfortable, as you said, I'm wondering if maybe there's a possibility of more volunteers. And, sorry, I'm just distracted by this. Also, I wanted to comment, so there's a few things I have written out and commented about. So the modulars and kindergarten classes moving. I understand why I used to get pushed back, and I know how hard everybody's working on it, but I just think it's really important that at least the board understands that there's still a class, an entire kindergarten class that doesn't have a classroom. And is, from what I understand, in the media center and not a true classroom, which I'm sure the teachers can totally find. But that also means that the rest of the classes don't have access to the media center. And I just really hope that this can be really prioritized, and this is not an insignificant amount of time. Also, the kids have been told that they're going to those classes, the teachers are, again, doing a great job at keeping the kids calm and not worried about it. But, you know, as families, we're not really getting the ability to, or this just keeps getting pushed back and back. And it is really difficult for the kids to not know when they're moving and what's really going on with this. So I don't know at this point if it's holding enough, but anything that can be done to expedite and not just say, oh, it's just under the, it's just another, like, every day, every week, they're not able to go to the media center. They're not able to have that special, they haven't had it all year. So I just wanted to emphasize that. Another thing, so I have a few things that I wanted to bring up. Another thing, I didn't get to see what you guys are approving with the food services policy. I have reached out to the Food Services Director and got some really helpful information. And I have heard, I spoke with a lot of families who have some concerns about the variety of food being offered. There was helpful information given back about the nutrition and that we're following all the standards. But I still think there's a really big lack of variety, and while each individual meal might meet the nutritious guidelines, having a variety is important. I see the exact same meals week after week, and I ask that that be explored further as well. I don't know if I have more time, I won't, I wouldn't want to, I want it to come whole time.
So many seconds.
I can, I can wait, thank you, I appreciate those things, and my unfiltered replies.
It's a good thing. Thank you, Abby, we appreciate your comments, always do. Any other speakers? Seeing none. Okay, I guess one of the thoughts, wait.
Okay, would it be appropriate to ask a question about something that comment you said?
During your own business?
Okay, oh, wait, hold on.
All right, so we're gonna do our board action items, and then we'll come back to public comment. So we'll be back up. So curriculum and instruction, one, do your action items.
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through eight.
On second?
Second.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Castaldon?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Ms. Barnamann?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, and I have finance facilities, I made a motion that we move items one through through eighteen. Second. Okay, I'm ready.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Castaldon?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Ms. Barnamann?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
And personnel, communication?
Yes, thanks, I'd like to move numbers one through thirty, with twenty nine mentioned as we discussed.
Second. Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Castaldon?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Ms. Barnamann?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
And the last word, policies and regulations, and I move that we accept policies for first reading, A through L, and second reading, A under that. Like, number nine, second one.
Second.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Castaldon?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Ms. Barnamann?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, moving on over here, board liaison reports, anybody have people that want to share our organizations? Okay, jam that to you.
I wasn't able to answer it. I asked for, I asked for you to know if there was anything to add, but you see.
Okay, just, yeah, just asking. President, your board, I don't have anything either, because I've done all my talking for tonight. Our business. All right, but I know you're prepared to come up, all right, you're doing this by procedure.
I can say, yeah, no, thanks, that sounds good. I just wanted to inquire about the kindergarten situation. Do we have an extra kindergarten class this year? I mean, does it go away on the modulars to fit existing students?
Yeah, so we have one class that is at the media center, so my understanding is that the students are still getting this McGrath's global unit. So they aren't going into the, into the room, but they are still receiving media services, and it's, McGrath is just doing it as a whole push-in model for, for media. Yeah, it's unfortunate that the P S E, P S E, you're, you see, you know, there's electric.
We have electric.
Yeah.
Leading on the final tie-ins for fire alarm, the final C O is, we're wanting to come.
Yeah, so just some final details. We're moving a staff that everybody else is looking to get us. I, I know John Cunningham has been on this, has been the main priority, and has been calling for, calling for, calling for, pull every string possible to get this going really quickly. But unfortunately, it's completely out of our control, and the problems that we're told, yes, within two weeks, and then that doesn't happen. And yes, but you know, so we're, it's a balance because we're trying to share and say, hey, that's okay, we're planning to be here two weeks, and then it doesn't happen, and then we're gonna put out another update. So part of it's like, we don't put it out, oh, it's expected, yeah, but people want communication. So it really has been really challenging, but ones that are running, there are for two years, so we'll be soon staying up with that.
I'm, I have no doubt that we're working as fast as possible, and I think those of us that have parents that are at home, you know, are familiar with how slow this is, and how their promises being, that point of happening, they're gonna say. I think my question is more about why do you not have that food star current, any of our classes?
Oh, because we opened up the preschool classes, because preschools start October first.
Oh, oh, I see, those are all open and running now, I, I see.
Yes, yes, well, preschool is up in progress, you know, this is your last month of homework to share, like, get going, so we've had the preschools in and out running, so we gotta try to, we need to try to reach our students. And we thought we'd be up and running with climate, but it's less than that.
Question is, okay.
So share the frustration with parents.
No, for sure, it's fine.
Unfortunately, appreciate the possibility of being out, but students are getting educated, just not like we're like, we didn't yet. Any other own business?
I don't know if this is all, because I was planning to bring it up as you're doing, but now it's gonna run up to no one. So I'm a bit worried. But I did wanna ask about the potential move of these meetings to the high school auditorium. Because, you know, they have been, yeah, I've been asking that for a while, it seemed like that was possible even for this meeting, so.
Well, we can't, because right now, it's already reserved for the, the high school honor club. And I went back to the day, and they were full on, still practicing, I'm still up to six o'clock, I don't know if they get done. The setup's beautiful, so what we have to do is we have to go in and fill out facilities, you know. And then I guess we'll go to the superintendent board, we can trump everybody, kick anybody who has our Mondays, kick them out of the facility and take it. But we have to go and do that, plus I want to make sure the tech department is available to run through some trial runs before we move it over there. So the call moving forward, if we decide to move it over there, the audio is better. We just have to configure the setup and all of that over there, and then figure out how we relocate the other people that are using it during the times in which we want it. So there are some conflicts, so maybe something that we do next year, and then just let a lot of people know that those are days that are already conflicted. So it's, it's a balance, your calendar year is January to December, the fourth calendar year, but schools start in the summer to reserve stuff for the full year. So it's a balance that we'll have to look at if you wanted to do it for next year. Or if there's availability, which we try to pilot it or something like that. So it's something that's on our radar, we just have to get in there and set it up and try it out. But right now, occupied by what I expect to be a wonderful presentation of.
So like, again, I would also like to volunteer to come in early one day, if there's anything we can do, we did, we don't have, if we're not meeting before, before meeting, we can come in at six thirty and just test it. I was just gonna say, needs a lot, we were just talking about how we just basically have a few microphones to be used.
Right, right.
My tech brain has an idea, so.
And what'd you say?
Yes, maybe we have this to do now, I know, I cure the frustration for the public, and I get it, it's, I don't know why it's so difficult.
I just wanted to do that for so long.
You're cutting it out for a little time, because my microphone wasn't working, and I was taking notes, I don't, I don't understand. Any other own business? Or new business? Okay, number one was welcome, and once again, welcome to your public participation, and this is the time to comment, this is our meeting time. So I think you're getting it up, you're doing this.
Hi, thank you, I'll let you speak again. Sorry, when I was talking earlier, I was a little just distracted by what was going on on the screen, so I didn't get to articulate myself when I was trying to say about the after care. What I was saying is, I understand that there are, as well on the agenda, there are volunteers who are able to come for runners for school day. Perhaps that can be looked at for after care as well, I know that's something that you also approve. And again, Colin has been great and very responsive, and I'll definitely reach out to him, but I won't mention that here. I know you said that the staffing is sufficient, but, you know, sufficient and good for the kids are, you know, two different things, and there are creative ways to find more things. You know, staff are working extremely hard, but often are just kind of trying to stay on top of things versus down there playing with the kids, you know, interacting with them. There's no fault of their, absolutely, they're doing an amazing job, but, you know, more bodies for these little kids is, is always helpful. I, I just wanted to, again, I'm just collecting my thoughts again, but I just wanted to also remind you that in terms of the library situation, the library in town is also closed. Again, you know, I never try and put all the people here, I understand that everyone's working as fast as they can, but I think coordination with the town is really critical. I, I don't know that, I don't know what's going on behind the scenes, but when the certificate of occupancy was needed, I, I hope, and I, I don't know if this is the case, I hope they were there the day that that was possible. I hope that the fire inspectors were there the day that that was possible, I don't know that, okay, I see you nodding, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that's the case. I know you guys are working very hard on this, but it does have a big impact on kids, and yes, this will be all set for the next couple of years. But again, every cohort of kids has this effect, and there is cohort that being affected by this. And we couldn't go to the library for years because of COVID, and now the library in town is closed, and now PR isn't experiencing, you know, checking out books and, and that whole thing. So of course, as families, we're trying to supplement them, do what we can, but some families don't have that opportunity. So I just wanted to make sure that the board of everyone understood that, doesn't mean that, you know, can you move faster, but I just wanted to get that context. The other thing, the last thing I wanted to comment on, is just, as a, as a community member, and, you know, through, to be honest, texting and chatting with other community members who are, who are listening, I'm absolutely shocked to hear that the P three is not an option, and this was explored for months, and it wasn't even an option really to begin with. I am not quite interested in standing why it's still not an option, because my understanding is redevelopment is a process that, you know, while it takes six months, if, if that's the best option, maybe that should still be up the table. I don't know what other, what other reasons, I was having trouble hearing, but what the other reasons were, that that's no longer on the table, but if it needs to remain an area of redevelopment, I know that that's, we know we all know that's done in this town. If that's the best long-term solution, I hope that, you know, we look into truly the best solution, even if it takes a little longer and not rushing to get to just a solution, but really the best solution. You know, I'm a big proponent for the best pre-K program, and I know we all want it to happen as soon as possible, as do I, I'm pushing that, but it's a balance between those things. So I'm just, I'm really surprised to hear that now we're saying it's not even an option, that was one of the two things that was presented. And when it was brought up previously, that perhaps first grade could be moved to Irving, and pre-K could, or first grade could be moved to Barlow, and pre-K could be in Irving, we were told, no, that's not an option. Now it is an option, so I'm sure everybody, you know, is nodding, I appreciate that, I just, I really hope that things can go a little smoother from here on out, and that these options can be truly explored instead of just kind of, you know, put forward and try to get things passed before they're truly explored, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commenters? Nope, seeing none, I move that we, a journey, and, yeah, I would be journeying.
Sorry.
All right, you're.
Hi.
Happy times.
Happy times, everyone, thank you all.